From Kern Government Television, welcome to this week's Kern County Board of Supervisors meeting. Originating from the County Administrative Center located at 1115 Trexton Avenue in Bakersfield, California. Grounded in ideas, energy, and innovation, Kern County's vision is to be a driving force for the world's fifth-largest economy. And our mission is to exceed expectations of the communities we serve, changing the way they feel about government, those who manage it and the services it provides. Today's Kern County Board of Supervisors meeting will convene momentarily.
Okay, board to reconvene. Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Supervisor Peters?
Here.
Supervisor Scribner?
Here.
Supervisor Flores?
Here.
Supervisor Couch?
Here.
Supervisor Perez?
Here.
Okay, good afternoon and welcome to the Tuesday, August 22nd, PM, meeting of the Kern County Board of Supervisors. We'll first hear from County Council, Margot Razan, from a report on actions taken in closed session.
Good afternoon, Chairman, members of the board. This morning in closed session, you met on items 31 through 34, and there is no reportable action.
Thank you, Ms. Razan. Okay, at this time, we'll be, again, considering the consent agenda. Agendas are located at the back of the room for anyone wishing to follow along. All items listed with a CA above the item number are considered to be routine and non-controversial by county staff. Consent items will be considered first and may be approved by one motion. If a member of the audience wishes to comment or ask questions regarding an item on the consent agenda, they may do so prior to a vote being taken. A member of the board may remove any item from the consent agenda, and it will be considered in its listed sequence with an opportunity for any member of the public to address the board concerning the item before action is taken. At this time, I'll read the consent agenda items. On page two, item three. On page three, items four through eight. And on item nine, this item has been withdrawn by the department and will not be considered. On page four, items 10 and 11. On item 12, this item will also be withdrawn by the department and not considered this afternoon. Page six, items 13 through 17. Actually, that was page five. Page six, items 18 through 24. On page seven, item 25. And on item 26, I want to strike Streets and Roads and add Transportation Development. Continue on page seven, items 27 through 32. Page eight, items 33 through 38. Page nine, items 39 through 45. And page 10, items 46 through 49. Is there any member of the public that would like to comment on any of the consent agenda items now is the time? I think we have some coming up. Come on down. Welcome.
President of the Committee of Progresso de la Man. And item 19, I just want to say thank you for the supervisor, Couch, administrators, Public Works, and all the board supervisors to support this project for our community members in La Man. It means a lot for us. So because our safe for our childrens and the community is first. So I just want to say thank you. And I know that little by little, we're going to improve our community. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Morales. Next speaker.
Good afternoon, Gustavo Gisrick with Centennial Research Department in the Environment and same line as Diana. Thank you for all the work, Mr. Couch and all the staff. It took three, four years for the community to see this happening on the item 19, the maps. Thank you so much. I just want to appreciate all the work that you do for our communities. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, any more speakers on the consent agenda only? Okay, seeing none, I'll bring it back to the board for action.
Motion of consent.
Second.
Okay, motion second. Please cast your vote.
The motion is approved, all eyes.
Okay, that brings us to item number one, public presentations. Now, this is the portion of the meeting that is reserved persons to address the board on any matter not on the agenda but under the jurisdiction of the board. Board members may respond briefly to statements made or questions posed. They may ask a question for clarification, make a referral to staff for factual information, or request staff to report back to the board at a later meeting. Also, the board may take action to direct staff to place a matter of business on a future agenda. Speakers are limited to two minutes. Please state and spell your name before making your presentation. Thank you.
Good afternoon. My name is Ralph Robles, R-O-B-L-E-S. I am a veteran. And for over a year now, I have been coming to you with questions relating to the election integrity in Kern County. So far, you have left your responses to Ms. Amy Espinoza, the county voter registrar. Ms. Espinoza has responded to my questions with disdainful, evasive, and uninformative answers. In fact, Ms. Espinoza skipped over the first question on the list of questions that I presented to you. In that question, I asked, when are we going to see surveillance cameras over the county's ballot drop boxes? This is not an inconsequential question. While most voters are aware that ballot harvesting is legal, some are not aware that ballot trafficking is illegal. It's okay for anyone to voluntarily turn in a ballot for someone else, but doing it for pay is not. A very effective method for being paid ballot staffers is to review ballot cameras for suspicious numbers of repetitive visits by individuals with large numbers of ballots. Ms. Espinoza's response to my second question, how many ballots were sent to invalid addresses, was none. I put the same question to the Election Integrity Group. Their response was that, on the average, about 1,500 are returned undelivered. So this difference of perceptions is very disturbing to me. So let me resubmit my list of questions to the state of Kern County's elections. It is my hope that the members of the Kern County Board of Supervisors will dine to answer me themselves instead of passing the buck to a lower-level administrator. And I have a copy for each and every one of you.
Sure, you can leave that with the clerk of the board, sir. Thank you. And then, I believe--
Thank you very much.
--our CEO, Mr. Jim Zervis, would like to say a few words.
Yes, honorable Chairman, members of the board. I'd like to just give Mr. Robles a response to his first question, and that is to, when will cameras be installed? Your board has authorized funding in the current budget to install cameras at all ballot drop box locations. We're in the process of evaluating where those would be located. In some cases, we might need to relocate a ballot box. It really depends on the infrastructure that's available at each site. So we're in the process of evaluating that right now, but that is an ongoing project. That's something we are working on this fiscal year. So I can't give you a precise date on when that will be done yet, but happy to share more details on that project with you as we're further along in the design and getting ready for implementation.
I appreciate that answer very much. My next question after that is, when do you think it will be installed and completed?
So I'm not at a point where I can give you an estimate, but I'll be sure--
How about before the next election?
So, Mr. Chairman, I will update your board and keep you apprised of that project as it's moving forward, but it is an active project. It's something we're working on that your board has provided funding for.
Glad, thank you. Thank you. Yeah, we've made that a priority in the funding and the infrastructure as well as the security. So thank you for the update, and we look forward to subsequent updates. Supervisor Peters?
Thank you, Chairman. I actually was going to say the same thing that our CEO, Mr. Zervis, did, but I know for a fact that I answered that question myself at our last meeting when I brought up that we had voted for the funding to put in those cameras. And I also just want to clarify that we're not passing the buck or passing you off to a lower-level administrator. But Ms. Espinoza is the elected head of elections, and that falls under her purview. So she's the appropriate person to answer those questions, but I just wanted to make that distinction.
In answer to your statement, anyone can put an entry on a line item, and that entry can sit there and cook for 1,000 years, or it can be transferred to another line item. So your answer is not an answer. Secondly, Ms. Espinoza has gotten her orders from you because you are the policymakers. You are where the buck stops. You are the ones that are answerable.
Yeah, well, sir, this isn't a big back and forth, and I'm happy to sit down with you and have this conversation, but this was a request that was brought by Ms. Espinoza to get these cameras, and I just made that fact clear at our last meeting. I'm just pointing that out, and that is going to be happening. And she is in charge of the Elections Department. She dictates how the Elections Department and the elections works.
Are you telling me that she makes policy?
I'm telling you that she's in charge of the Elections Department.
Are you telling me that she writes the check?
Nope, that's a different situation.
Yes, sir. Thank you for a non-answer.
Okay, thank you, Supervisor Couch. Thank you, Supervisor Peters.
I just want to make the same offer that I made a moment ago. I would love to sit down with you and Amy Espinoza, and I'll tell you why. And that's because I think you're asking particular questions like I would ask them, not being an expert in elections. And she is answering them like an expert in elections. And I think you all need to be, to just sit down and have a conversation about what you're really after so she can really give you some answers. And she can give you answers verbally, and then she can memorialize them in writing. But I just wanted to make that offer again, right here.
I will gladly accept your offer, sir.
Thank you.
But I want to clarify, in case there's any misunderstanding. I am not here about the nuts and bolts. I am here about policy. I'm here about money. You are the ones that write the checks. You are the ones that make the policy. And my understanding is that the one with the gold makes the rules. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
My name is PJ Chemaly, C-H-E-M-A-L-Y. Thank you for the opportunity to address the board. Kern County resident with some rentals in Taft, and I'm here to address some problems experienced with my rentals as a result of pandemic moratoriums. I have two properties that are completely destroyed and vandalized by tenants during the pandemic. One of them is overrun and occupied by squatters doing illegal activities. Gas utilities on one of the properties has mysteriously been compromised and had to be cut by PG&E for safety reasons. Empirical evidence leads me to deduce that alternative cooking and heating methods will burn my property to the ground, taking with it the neighbors' properties that are in very, very close proximity. As a result of the pandemic, the courts are overrun. Last checked with a court clerk, it takes about three months for an unlawful detainer to get to a judge. Tenants are given a further two months after that to move out, if not contested, and it takes me about another two months to repair the damage after they leave. Meanwhile, I have to pay rent, court fees, and with six and nine months of no income, I still have to pay property taxes, insurance, mortgage, and repairs. I'm asking the board for help in finding a solution to this problem. Ideally, a solution that can be found that tenants can still be housed and allowing me to make a livelihood. Thank you, with that, I yield.
Thank you. Thank you, Supervisor Scribner.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr.--
Chemaly.
Chemaly?
Yes.
Did I say that right?
Yeah.
Chemaly? Okay. I represent the Taft area, and so I'd be happy to assist you. I'd like you to leave your contact information with Mr. Zervis. In addition, we do have our Chief Code Compliance Officer that's in the audience. He may be able to speak to you at the conclusion of your testimony here in order to get some addresses where we could check. But I'm guessing that this is going to be something that's going to have to be done in tandem with the Sheriff's Department and our co-compliance office.
Okay.
And so between leaving your contact information with Mr. Zervis and a Mr. Rojas would be able to grab you after the meeting here, I think we can start to make some progress for you.
Appreciate it. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Thank you. I think if memory serves me correctly, I think there was increased staffing or funding for evictions from the sheriffs in the last budget that I read. For some reason, I remember that. And I know when we had subsequent cases that they're handling the evictions a lot quicker now, at least in the cases I've had in the third district. So, okay, thank you. Next speaker, please.
Yes, good afternoon. My name is Penny Martinez. That's P-E-N-N-Y, Martinez, M-A-R-T-I-N-Z. I'm a member of the Bakersfield Republican Women. This is Mary Lee Schider. She's also a member. We're one of 16 sponsorship groups that are supporting the Bakersfield National Cemetery for this year's Reef Across America Community Project. So we need 7,500 rees to cover all of the grave markers at our cemetery. As of today, we still need 3,737 rees, and then we only have until November 28th to accomplish this goal. So we have three months in which to do so. So we're in a program for every two rees sponsored, i.e. purchased, the Reef Across America will give us one for free. So we chose that program. We live in a veteran-- I'm a veteran. We live in a veteran-centric community. This sign that we have here is displayed on 14 highways throughout Kern County. So Kern County, county line, where we honor veterans. Well, this is a simple way in which to do that. So we need your help in supporting the Reef Across America, remembering and honoring those who served honorably, and teaching the importance of freedom. And we need you to help encourage your constituents to get on board and help us out. We need your support, and we count on each of you to, of course, sponsor a reefer. There's $17. So for buy two, and we get one for free. That's 34 bucks. Really, really simple. Oh, and, okay, so we got involved because we-- Oh, and, okay, so we got involved because we were short. Last year, I was out there. We were short over 2,000-plus wreaths, and we had people coming up to us asking, why wasn't our veterans honored? And I didn't know what to say. What can I say? So we're doing a better job of trying to get, communicating and getting in front of you folks and news and everything else. We radio, trying to get the word out. So we hope we can count on your support, and we hope to see all of you out there on Saturday, December 16th.
Great. Thank you, Penny. And then, did you want to leave us the event information for--
Yes, I got it right here.
Okay, so we can pass that out. Supervisor Couch and Perez.
Excuse me, ladies. Before you leave, can I ask you to come to the microphone? You've got some free television time right now. So do you have a website? Do you have some phone numbers? Do you have some information you might want to relay?
Yes, the website is reesacrossamerica.org backslash C-A-0797. That'll take you right to our webpage, our sponsorship place. But there's 16 of us out there. So, and go ahead and purchase some wreaths. That would be great. We'd love your support.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Okay, next speaker, please.
Jeff.
Oh, I'm sorry, Supervisor Perez. You punched in, yeah?
That's okay. I would just like to ask you, Laura from my office is right there. Can you see her with her hand up? If you would contact her or give her your contact information right now, because, you know, I want to buy 50 wreaths or so. So if you could connect with Laura, we'll get moving on that. Thank you for what you do. This is really cool.
Thank you, Supervisor Perez. Next speaker, please.
Good mood today. Just want to appreciate your support, Supervisor Couch and staff. Just to report back that in San Jose Avenue, we were struggling for about a year trying to bring Edison, you know, to deal with the residents. And finally, in the last couple of weeks, you know, Mr. James has been supporting us. And finally, Edison came and met with the residents, and we are meeting with the residents this evening. So I was thinking, you know, when I was driving here, you know, for us, it may take a year, you know, community trying to change things, but sometimes for you in power, it takes a little bit of effort, you know, to help us move farther. But I just want to appreciate that and, you know, keep doing that because we need that kind of support. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
Gustavo, Cal Rossi was here today, and he gave us a report, not from the podium, but he told us the same thing, that it was moving along. So, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for your support.
Thank you. Next speaker, please. Okay, I think that concludes public presentations. Moving on to board member announcements or reports. Seeing none. Okay, that brings us to adjournment. Having no more items to consider, we'll adjourn to August 29, 2023, 9 a.m. Thank you.
What did you study in school to prepare for being a flight director?